We've lost our minds.
The ne'er-do-well Georgetown toddlers.
No, it's, you know, no, it's, 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 we are always actively thinking of ways to facilitate conversations.
All right, well, we got to talk about everything snow-related.
It's snow season. Didn't you realize it? Didn't you feel like that out there?
I want to do these up here because I'd be afraid.
Do you know I literally Googled "snow shovels" after doing those for the packet? Because I'm like, I guess it's time. I guess it's like-
Oh, yeah. You have to get the, wait, you guys don't have a, you don't have a, like, sidewalk?
We don't, but we have a driveway.
Well, yeah.
Okay, at 6:00, I'm going to call this meeting to order, please. Everyone can please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on this evening's agenda is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, is there anything we'd like to add or take away from this evening's agenda? Hearing none, I will move on to public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to make public comment to something that is not currently on this evening's agenda, something that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do so. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And some of the rules of public comment, please, just want to remind everyone to keep their comments to three minutes only. Please be respectful in both your behavior and your comments. Make comments to the commission only. And just a reminder that we do have a no clapping or booing rule in place so that we can ensure everyone feels safe voicing their opinions. So please come forward and stay in public comment at this time.
Good evening, I'm Hillary Snell. Thank you for letting me address you tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. My basic objective and goal in appearing here tonight is to request that you allow me to park in front of my home at 1065 Plymouth Road Southeast, East Grand Rapids. I'll read part of this because I wanted it to be concise. And my wife and I purchased that home in 1965, and I've lived there for 60 years. She died of lung cancer in 2012. I'm a lifetime resident of the community. I was born in East Grand Rapids in 1934, was raised and lived at 937 Ogden Avenue as an only child until my father died when I was 14, when my mother moved over to Breton Road in a house you could see on the first block off between Lake Drive and Argentina that I could see when I was through the houses when I was growing up, 949 Breton. After graduation from East Grand Rapids High School in 1952, I spent the time from then until 1960 away from the community, at college, law school, and the United States Army. Now, today, August 18, you are telling me I cannot park in front of my house because bicycles will occupy the parking space, which has been mine for two-thirds of my adult life. I can't believe it. I do not, I do not think it's fair. You've taken away from me a right held by practically everyone else in the community. You want to give my right to somebody else. I feel like I'm expendable and don't count. Plymouth Road in front of my home isn't wide enough for a driving lane, a parking lane, and a lane exclusively for bicycles. You have designated Plymouth from Argentina to Hall Street for driving and bicycles, but not for any parking. Hillary Snell, my lot is relatively narrow in width and depth from the front of the house to the sidewalk. It's sheltered by two large oak trees and is beautifully landscaped. I'm told that I can put an extra driveway so that people that want to come see me or visit me, I can put an extra driveway, which will give me plenty of room to park in my front lawn. People do that up and down the street. My lot doesn't have enough room to add cement in front of the house without significant degradation to what's now a very beautiful, small, front garden. I think that my garden yard is an asset to the neighborhood and the community. You, I'm told, don't think so, but I do. My wife Connie was a master gardener who designed and maintained our front lawn and garden. Since her death, I've retained professional gardeners to keep it beautiful. Connie and I, I point this, maybe this isn't relevant, but it's relevant to me. Connie also designed and maintained my backyard, which is a beautiful garden, and the beautiful garden you see in front of the Ford Museum. I'm sure you've looked at that very tall, those very tall glass windows on the east face of the museum and noted the reflecting pool and the garden beneath it. If you look, there's a pillar there in front of it that says on the pillar, among other things, "Garden designed and maintained by Connie Snell, master gardener." I want parking because there's no other solution for me to the problem. The street simply isn't wide enough for, for, for me, well, it's not wide enough to accommodate, uh, only, just, or it's not wide enough to give me parking under the specifications if you're going to have, if they're going to have the bike lane. The commission has already, I'm told, allowed exceptions to the rule of parking there, but the exceptions to it being exclusively a bike lane are not given to property owners. They're given to vendors.
Mr. Snell, you've gone two minutes past your time. If you could please start to wrap up your comments, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
If I could what?
Start to wrap up your comments, please.
I feel I've been treated unfairly. I feel I, I, I have been treated unfairly, and I want an exemption from your parking ban because there's no other solution to the problem. The city needs to allow multiple uses because Plymouth Avenue, Plymouth, from Argentina Hall doesn't have enough room for standard bicycle lanes. The master plan says the city wants more green space and less cement. So I'm respectfully asking you to allow me an exemption and let me park in front of my house on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Hi, Nancy Patterson, 2104 Gorham Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Good eye contact. Oh, there's some. Thank you for making time for we, the people who elected you, to speak. I am here once again to represent Reed's Lake. I refer you to my comments at the last meeting. Is the overhead light on? With a several-acre concrete jungle proposed to be built that will have stormwater runoff down into Reed's Lake, I asked the tester who does the water quality testing on our lake what the city should ask her about ongoing testing of the water for any changes. This was the first time she had heard of this development, and her reaction was, "Oh." I heard the concern in her voice. She asked, "Is the stormwater runoff going to be diverted into a culvert and then directed into the lake?" "If so, that would be easier to measure if the development added pollutants to the lake." "If it is a general stormwater runoff down to the lake, that would be trickier to measure," she said. I asked her if the detention pond at John Collins Lake would be sufficient to clean the waters before going into the lake, but she had no information on that specific detention pond. She didn't know what it could do. As you may know, detention ponds slow the movement of stormwater, more to prevent flooding, and often not enough to allow all the debris to be removed. Retention ponds hold the water such that most of, if not all of, the debris falls out to the bottom. We have four detention ponds and no retention ponds in East Grand Rapids. The tester could not tell me, with the limited information I could provide, how the city would go about testing for the stuff the development might add to Reed's Lake waters. I could find no information regarding testing for the presence of toxic heavy metals or PFOS compounds in our lake. I would expect people who fish there would like that information, as well as the people who help protect the wetlands around the lake. I expect the birds and other fauna who depend on our lake would also like that information. The jewel of our community is Reed's Lake. It's on the logo. I ask you to please do more testing of the lake now, before the construction of any development. Please recognize that John Collins Park Detention Pond may not remove the stormwater runoff debris and pollutants as suggested by city staff, so we need to plan for that. Finally, in light of the limited green space in the development plans and possible private streets onto which who knows what chemicals might be dumped, we need to learn more about our lake. So if there are any changes for the worse, we can and must hold the developer accountable to remediate the problems. Allow me to appropriate and contort the old adage, "Stuff runs downhill." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
I'm Patricia Westphier, 2311 Wealthy Street, number 18. I agree with Mr. Snell about the bike lanes, okay? They, I really don't think we have room for them. But I would like to commend the commissioners and the city officials for the many ways that you have made our city a better place to live during this very hot summer, the very last where the traffic circles were now learning to negotiate. However, there was always the PUD playing gently on our minds. The various visions for Gaslight Village often overshadowed the other work you were able to complete. Many of us have left these meetings feeling frustrated and unheard. I especially felt dismissed by Mr. Burdick. Ryan, I voted for you to represent me in Ward 1. Your profile says you enjoy listening to residents. Maybe I don't say the right things for you to really listen to me. You have not been called to represent the developer who has slipped in and an additional 42 units from the original plan. You have called, been called to be a First Ward City Commissioner who represents me and the rest of the residents in your ward. I plead with you to listen to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westphier. Next, please.
Hi again. This is Jerry Anderson, 435 Edgemere Drive. First, I want to thank you, I don't know who's responsible, but the sidewalk along Robinson Road around Fisk Lake was a needed and beautiful addition to the neighborhood, and I appreciate it. It's a second route for me to walk my dog on nightly because it was unsafe before. The other thing I just want to bring up is the optics of the commission right now regarding traffic. We have sat here and talked about the potential for traffic problems with this development. People from Greenwood and Lovett and Wealthy Street have addressed you and said the traffic is already too much and dangerous, and they fear for their children on scooters and as pedestrians. And not a lot of feedback has come back from those complaints. And now, two traffic circles go in, and we find out that there's a study from 2023 that says that the area where 150 new households are going to dump out of a single driveway is already the single most dangerous place in East Grand Rapids for pedestrians, and we've had the most near misses there of any other place in the city. The optics of that just aren't good, that you've done your homework and that traffic is not a concern, and once again, that traffic studies can be put off until after this development has been approved. It's just, doesn't look good to tell people, "We're listening to you," and then you kind of spring on this, "We're listening to you, but there's things that we didn't even know, like that this area was already dangerous and we're going to dump a whole much more traffic on it." It doesn't look good, and I think the people of the city deserve you to slow down, and at least the traffic studies say, "We're going to take care of that before we approve 150 households." That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, please.
Jerry did use all of his time. Can I have the extra?
You may not.
I knew the answer to that question. David Decker, 925 Belclaire. Here to talk about character of East Grand Rapids, specific to Standard C and D, as well as B. Two weeks ago, after the meeting, Laura came out and spoke with myself and Betsy and a few other folks, and I followed that up with an email to her on August 5. And I copied Abby on that email because included in the email was 15 minutes of the transcript from the July 21 city commission meeting. And Abby and Laura were two of the primary speakers during that 15 minutes, along with other folks. So in the transcript, it's clear who was saying what. And I added some comments and some questions. And I appreciated the phone call that I got from both Abby and Laura and the opportunity to discuss. And if you could look at that transcript and answer those other questions, it'd certainly be appreciated. But primarily tonight, what I want to do is read the email that I sent to Laura after we talked today. And I copied Abby because she's a key participant there because she was in that transcript as well. So first, thank you both for your follow-up email and the telephone conversations. Tonight in my public comments, I plan to reference my request from August 5, specifically the question that said, "Case law examples were requested and not provided." That's the dialogue between commissioners. Do we have case law? No, we don't, and we moved on. Without specific examples of case law that define what character means for Standard C and D, how can we make a determination of whether or not those standards are met? The definition of character really matters for determining what standard, whether C and D are met. Residents want to know what our commissioners and mayors believe. And the definition of character matters for Standard B, the master plan, which calls out character 13 times. The PUD's impact on the community. Now, that's the second part of Standard B, the PUD's impact on the community. That was only discussed briefly on July 21, passed over primarily. Residents want a PUD that positively impacts the community as per the master plan's many statements of character. Here's one last question. Does the same case law pertain to Standard C and D as it does to B when it comes to defining character? The definition of character in the master plan is quite different than what it is in C and D. Good B. Let's see, let's see the case law. Let's, let's get the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
My name is Erica Dunton. I live at 2100 Gorham Drive Southeast. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As residents, we come here not simply as stakeholders in the development, but as stewards of this community that we deeply value. In East Grand Rapids, the true measure of this city has never been, has never been square footage or storefronts. It's in the people. The traditions and the shared value that make this place feel like home for all of us. That's why the Gaslight redevelopment is not just about buildings or zoning. It's about the process that it reveals and the risks at the core of who we are. For many, this has become a tipping point, not simply because of the development itself, but because of how the process has unfolded, eroding trust, dismissing community feedback, lacking any data, and overlooking the core values that for nearly a century have distinguished East Grand Rapids from everywhere else. As you consider the path forward, I urge you to consider that the redevelopment should never come at the community's trust. Whether this plan moves forward or pauses, the real work before us is ensuring that the decisions reflect the values that define East Grand Rapids: transparency, accountability, and a deep respect for the residents. At the end of the day, it's not buildings that make this place special, it's the people. Please, let's make sure that this process honors the truth that East Grand Rapids has always represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunton. Next, please.
My name is Ann Rish, and I live at 2107 Anderson. I'd just like to talk a little bit about the new traffic circles. I'm not that wild about them. I, I feel like it's way too much going on. I, I don't think it's attractive. And I, I feel like they're kind of dangerous, too. Today, like, I was at Head the Right Way, and a lady almost hit me, and she thought it was my fault. I think a lot of people have trouble making those work. And I think, and maybe I'm wrong with the studies, but it seems like they're not the greatest for pedestrians either because when are they supposed to go? I mean, a three-way stop is kind of the same thing, but I remember being downtown once by a really busy traffic circle, and I waited forever. I mean, there really wasn't any good time for a pedestrian to go, and the cars are always looking at the other cars and not at the pedestrians, I think. Let's see, I think that's about it. Nobody I talked to likes them. Oh, and those bike lane delineators on Franklin or MLK. Not that wild about those either. They were on my way to work. It seems like nobody's riding their bike, nobody's parked along those places, and then the cars have this much room. You can't, really can't get out of the way as easily if you need to from another car. That's about it, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your feedback. Next, please. Nobody else? Okay, if no one cares to make public comment, then I will close public comments, and I will bring this up here for the report of Mayor and City Commissioners, including committee liaison reports. And I, I know I always pick on the end people, so I'm going to start, I'm going to switch it up. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Hunter.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner, I apologize. Do you have anything to add today?
Yeah, I just want to add that I was, on Saturday night, fortunate enough to spend some time with our senior class at East Grand Rapids High School up at Camp Henry for the annual senior overnight. 170 of the 225 kids were able to take part, and it's just great to immerse myself, or, you know, anybody who takes part. There's obviously many volunteers that make the schools great here. So it's just great to be, be with the soon-to-be graduating class and, and kind of spend that time just in and around them and trying to act like I'm cool for, for a day and a half. Very, very good time.
That's awesome. Yeah, what a great experience. Thanks for sharing. I do not have anything this evening. Okay, Commissioner Schwartz?
Just thanks for the engagement tonight, outside of this room, too. Had some good conversations in the past couple of weeks with residents, so thank you for that. And then I just always wanted to, or also wanted to speak to the Department of Public Works experiments. We don't always agree on things like the traffic circles or delineators. I know people have feelings about that, too, but I just want to point out they are temporary and extend a thank you to our staff for always trying new things and being open to feedback. There's QR codes out there and ways to email to say, "You love it, you hate it." Either way, I appreciate that we try new things, and, and we're always looking for better ways to move us around safely, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Wesley?
I mean, not a whole lot tonight, just really, we kicked off with school, first day today, and just as a reminder for all people, both, you know, children that are, that are biking or walking, as well as drivers, to, to be mindful of that there are kids now going and toing from school. Generally, people, it's very chaotic sometimes, especially when we're going through that whole rush with the middle school and high school all being really close together. So just take a little extra more time, and then as we, it gets darker and darker in the mornings. That's something we really want to be mindful of. And the last thing is just to remind all the walkers and reminding your children, too, to use those flashing beacon buttons. Those are really a great way that can help stop traffic, to allow them to cross safely. I see a lot of people walking up there and not pushing that button, kind of waiting for traffic to stop, and then, and I feel bad for them, and I'm just kind of like, hey, please, just push the button, and then traffic will know what to do. And we do have those flashing beacons also out at those, at those traffic circles that are, that we just, we put in there as a test pilot. So we encourage them, everyone, to use those as well. Should be doing its job to stop traffic for the pedestrians crossing. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Burdick?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Commissioner Schwartz's comments on our traffic, our traffic circles and, and more just our traffic planning, and thank our Public Works for, even though there are different opinions, and like, while my opinion is just one of many, that you guys are trying and following the data, and, and for residents with school starting and with new traffic flows in place, like, have a, maybe an extra pause. Because I can tell you from new sidewalks to new traffic circles, you kind of have to re-adjust your expectations when you're driving around. I can tell you when I turn on to Cascade now, with that sidewalk down Cascade, I have to almost retrain myself that there's now a sidewalk there, so I have to be looking for pedestrians in a place that maybe I wasn't before. Our, the RRFBs help a lot with that, those flashing lights. And, and yeah, especially in the fall here with, with, with a ton of students on their bikes. It was great seeing everyone riding into school today. Keep an eye out and, and maybe take that extra pause just, just to make sure that, that everyone's being safe out there.
Great. Commissioner Skanks?
I would just add that I've had some really great feedback about the new sidewalks at Cascade Road and just how much people like them. People coming both ways from the Golden Triangle into the city and people who are also going out into the Golden Triangle. Maybe their kids are biking over to visit friends. They are very, very appreciative of how much better that road is working for walkers and bikers. So just wanted to pass that along. Other than that, welcome back to school, everybody, and nothing else to add. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I don't have anything unique to add either. I've had a lot of engagement with residents about the, the new sidewalks and then also the experimental traffic circles. And some people, the feedback has been super positive. Some people are still undecided. But I just wanted city staff to know that throughout my engagement, all the theme was, "Thank you to city staff for continuing to look at different means and ways to improve our community." So everybody was just excited that something new was trying and giving their feedback. So the theme was, "Thank you again for all your hard work and everything that you guys do." And again, welcome back to school, everyone, and I wish all teachers, students, all support staff a successful school year. And again, I know that every commissioner has said it, but let's just kind of rethink our morning routine, take a pause, slow down, knowing that all those kiddos are now back on the sidewalks and the roads, trying to get safely to school. So that's all I have.
Just a couple of things. A reminder, Taste of East and Rally on Reed's is this Wednesday. It starts at 5:00. So that'll be going on. As I updated the commission, we anticipate Gaslight Investors to be on the first meeting in September agenda, but we'll continue to work through that process. And then just one last con- And then just one last comment on the traffic circles. Just reminder, there is a survey out there that you can take. These will be removed in October. One of the things that, well, some of the feedback we've gotten is, if we do move forward with a permanent installation, would it look like it does? And the answer is no. We were operating within existing curb lines. If, in the event, a recommendation comes forward, the design of a permanent solution would be different to accommodate a lot of different things, whether it be the trucks, things of that nature. So we're just operating with that existing footprint for this demonstration project. So kudos to Mr. Lefave and DPW staff. They were out there till 1:30.
I was out there till 1:30 in the morning, but we had two shifts work overnight to get it completed. So I was back at like seven.
Yep. So we had some tire staff, but just again, the amazing job that they did to get something like that implemented overnight. It's just kudos to the team and all the hard work of getting it planned and ready to go. With that, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the regular agenda items. First on the agenda, we have to consider the final reading and approval of an amendment to the city's purchasing ordinance. That introduction will be done by City Manager Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before you, the second reading of a proposed amendment to the purchase ordinance, raising it from currently 5,000 to 10,000. We reviewed it at the last commission meeting and is ready for final consideration this evening.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Charles on this agenda item? Okay. Hearing none, then. I will entertain a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any further conversations?
Because I do have one question. We're gonna have the policy following this at like the next meeting or something?
Yep.
Okay.
Good question. Okay, then we can go to a vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have to consider authorizing the purchase of three custom East Grand Rapids Department of Public Works sidewalks, snowpack ice removal equipment attachments. That introduction will be Deputy City Manager, Mr. Lefave.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. I know with the recent weather we've had, this is probably the last thing you're expecting for an agenda, but we are actually
Be prepared.
We are actually in the mode of moving on to our planning for winter maintenance for this winter season. You may recall from our, it is outlined in the memo, in our strategic plan, in our goals and objectives for the Department of Public Works, for probably the past five years, we've been looking at different types of more innovative ways to mechanically remove snow and ice from sidewalks because we were unable to use deicing agents. And I think I went into great detail here and be happy to answer any questions on that, that part of that. So we've purchased equipment from Europe, from Canada. We've had a lot of Zoom and phone conversations from other areas where they battle snow and ice as we do. And through some of those other pilots, you know, we've determined that different aspects of them are somewhat effective, some less effective. But what we've determined is that kind of, all the components together work really well. The downside to that is to combine all those together with the existing attachments we have, we would have to run, or we do have to run, three different operators and three different pieces of equipment, which then doesn't align with our operations and what we're trying to do in terms of our climate action plan. It also is not something that moves very fast. So while it's somewhat effective for mechanically removing snow and ice pack, it's just not feasible for us to get to the whole community and to address things in the manner which we like. So we do hear from the community. It's probably the number one thing I hear about for public works operations in the wintertime is usually related to sidewalks. And as you're all aware, we're not suggesting any changes to any, any form of the snow and ice guidelines and not any changes to our ordinance, which I've provided those experts for you. What we're endeavoring to do is to continue to improve upon our level of service with these attachments. So our public works team, in combination with a fabricator, I could tell you there wasn't a lot of interest in this from the private sector. We worked together to kind of customize and make a custom attachment that works for the width of our sidewalks, the weight of the equipment. It's something that we can operate with one operator and one piece of equipment. We believe that we will be able to provide a much more enhanced level of service to the community. It still will not be a bare pavement standard. And I think I outlined a lot of reasons why that's a challenge. But again, it's about providing a better level of service for the community, and that's something we're committed to. So as noted here, the additional three attachments total $43,650. And that would be with ProSource Metalworks of Wyoming, Michigan, a local vendor. And really would be happy to answer any questions you all have from all the information I have here, if you have any.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Lefave? Thank you. I think you provided enough, a lot of good information. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, may I have a motion in a second on this agenda item? So moved?
Second.
Wonderful. Commissioners, any further conversation?
We asked a lot of questions in finance about this one. It's very interesting and appreciate the ingenuity coming up with this. I think a couple of highlights, questions that I had that were answered were, you know, like, who is, who's making this? Do they have a warranty? There's no warranty because it's a custom product. But we do have people on staff, and they are the right kind of people who would be able to fix it if something needed to be tinkered with. And we can also, like, repowder coat it if needed down the road. That was one of the questions that I had. I don't know if anybody else would have had that. But other than that, you know, we were just, I'll speak for myself. I was impressed with the design and just trying to make us have safer routes for everybody. We're a walking community. Safer routes for everybody who wants to walk or needs to walk to get to school.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. Because I think our first question was kind of a why, because we had a lot of these pieces. And when it was explained to us, this is kind of combining three different units into one so that we don't have to have three separate operators on three separate motorized things following each other down the sidewalk. So it should shave our, it should allow us to be in more places as well as, you know, match our eco goals of, you know, less powered things every morning going down the sidewalk. So that was a big one. And then it also, from the design, a lot of the questions we had was, how will it handle bumpy sidewalks or uneven sidewalks? And as you can imagine, they've already thought of all that, and it sounds like it can handle those well.
Great. Good information.
Commissioner Schwartz hinted, talked about this a little bit, but it was also mentioned from you, Doug, that these would be used a little bit more primarily on the, what you call, school priority routes, correct?
Correct. And well, that's another agenda item we'll have tonight, too. So typically, when we go back to sidewalks, the first ones that are plowed are our priority routes, which align with school routes for schools to make sure that those are addressed before 7:00 AM when school starts in the morning. So then we would redeploy these, depending on what weather event we have and what the conditions are, we would deploy these out in that same manner. Those would be first priority routes for us to address. Those are the common ones, again, for school, but also, I think, for, we see from our pedestrian studies that we've had completed related to crosswalks, generally aligned with those as well. So hopefully, we would be making a higher level of service for those initially. And then it really just depends on what's next for a weather event, whether we're able to move on to our secondary routes or if we get another civil storm the next day, we jump right back and rinse and repeat. So our goal is really to, with the enhanced equipment, with the addition of the equipment, really to be able to give the opportunity for us to be able to touch the entire city with this higher level of service. And that's really where our goal is. And we certainly understand the challenges of winter in Michigan, and we just endeavor to do a better job and provide a higher level of service.
So this is going to disappoint all those kiddos hoping for those snow days.
We don't make that call, but...
Were there any other thoughts or comments? Okay, then we can go to the vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have to consider the purchase of winter maintenance road salt. Again, introduction by Mr. Lefave.
Okay, in the memorandum, I outlined the partnership we have with 12 different agencies. And also, Grand Valley State University participates with us with this this salt purchasing consortium, where we basically pool our tonnage together for what our needs are for different road networks and bid that out together so we can, we can benefit from that economy of scale and that volume of salt that we need for the winter maintenance season. So we have pricing, this pricing for this year that comes in at 7182 per ton. I provided you with a bit of history there, going back to 1920 and 2021, where we were about $80 per ton and how it's been relatively flat since that time, that time period in terms of cost of that commodity. I also wanted to point out that we've been able to, over that period of time, and actually a little bit longer, we've been utilizing some additional technology and training to help us be more efficient in how we apply material in the city. So we've purchased and had several sensors around the city that tell us what's happening in the ground in terms of, on the pavement and below the pavement, what those, what those temperatures are. You know, you hear in the weather reports what the air temperature is that's very different, what's happening in the pavement. And sometimes it's not intuitive that we would be treating or not be treating based on that. So we've been able to reduce our usage by about 200 ton in that timeframe, too. So again, we're cognizant of making sure that we're accomplishing what the level of service expectations are for the community, but we also want to be cognizant of the environmental aspects, too. And the best way for us to do that is just to be, utilize technology and training to have our equipment operators apply accordingly.
Wonderful. Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lefave on this agenda item? All right, hearing none. May I have a motion in a second on this agenda item?
So moved. Second.
Any further conversations, Commissioners? Okay, then we can go to a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have to consider proposed revisions to snow and ice guidelines related to Department of Public Works operation with respect to winter maintenance. And this again, is introduction by Mr. Lefave. We are getting all set for winter.
Yes, we are. We are. So we want to take a look, the department wanted to take a look at our snow and ice guidelines. We've had some changes, you know, over the years with community demographics and how, kind of what the language and the policy, but it means for level of service for the community. And so we're not changing, the revisions, amendments, or changes do not change any service level, but are really intended to provide more clarity for the community when they see these, so they understand what it means to us. So based on that feedback over a period of time, we've been, we put together a redline version for you in the packet that kind of outlines what those changes would be. And they kind of tie back to partly our ordinance and partly for our snow and ice guidelines, just so that, depending on which document you're looking at, it's a consistent message you're getting of what the level of services and what we're able to accomplish for the residents. And then the other piece to this is really looking at, we like to take a look at just some of our school demographics to look at where our, where our plowing routes are, what other initiatives do we have in place from our, from a planning perspective. And so I guess I'll throw this up here. This is the, this is the changes that we're proposing to align with the snow and ice guidelines. And with the closure of St. Stephen's School here, we've noted that anything in blue, we're looking at removing that enhanced level of service because we understand that that school, with the closure being a few years now, we understand now that it's not going to be reopened. And so we've also looked at some of the school demographics, and I can show that in a second because it'll be a little harder to see in some ways. But also our Safe Routes to School program, where we're looking to enhance service and infrastructure to the, I'll call the north shore part of the city or even some of the students and families that live in Grand Rapids Township that connect to our community. So we've completed a new sidewalk in our partnership with the Road Commission in Grand Rapids Township here at Robinson Cascade Road. And we're looking at some enhancements through the Safe Routes to School program along Reed Lake Boulevard here and into the park here to connect. And so what we're proposing is that we actually add in, it's shown in the memo as orange, but I knew it wouldn't show very well here. So it's the, it's the yellow highlighter would be, these would all be additional routes to connect around the lake and also add into Argentina here at the request of the legislature. So those would be the additions and subtractions, more additions and subtractions.
Right.
And then I'll show the, just for, I know it's a little bit busy, but just to show when we're looking at school demographics and we look at where we have crossing guards, where we have existing RFBs, traffic signals, traffic counts. This is, the heat map portion here shows the student population, K through 12 in the city, which primarily is south of Lake Drive, as you can see. But we want to make sure that we're still providing a level of service to those in areas that may not have a huge population because they're not afforded the same level of service. So we're trying to make sure that we're aligning with that and also even outside of the city proper to connect our neighbors to the community as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the proposed changes related to the routes or to any of the texts in the guidelines.
And just to clarify, the initial request, first action item is the update to the guidelines and visions, and then our next agenda line is the routes.
The routes. Okay, for sure.
So are we combining the two items or?
No, just kind of presenting the two together.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lefave on the first item? The snow and ice guidelines?
Yes, I do have a question. So there's new language added in, on Section 8 in the snow and ice guidelines. It says, "Residents should clear any residual snow pack that remains from mechanical removal by the city and utilize concrete safe ice melt material to maintain sidewalks to desired level of service." So the first part of this sentence seems to give a fairly clear direction to residents, that they should clear the sidewalk. The second part of the sentence seems to leave that very open to interpretation. Like, if an individual resident is satisfied with the mechanical equipment, then that's fine.
Correct.
Is that, like, which thing are we saying here? Because I get a lot, I get a lot of, I'm sure we all get a lot of feedback about residents who say, we are supposed to, or we're not supposed to, or it's supposed to be this, and like, yes.
So I think that's the challenge in almost, in our current state and where we're at in our, in our country or anywhere where there's, where there's both sides of that. What we're telling you is we're going to come and do our best job we can at mechanical removal. If your level of service, because some of the people that, by the time I talk to them, they believe it is the level of service that we should be providing, that we're unable to provide, we tell them, then you should do this. And we want that clear in the policy so that when our staff and employees are interacting with the public or when we're sending information out to prepare them for winter maintenance, they have a clear understanding of what we're going to do and what they can do if their level of service is different than what we're providing. Because the next question is, well, what do I need to do? And well, we'll put it right there for you. You need to remove any 5% residual that's left. And if you like to use deicing agents, we want you to use the ones that are safe for sidewalks so they don't get damaged.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't see the sentence as providing that clarity. I see it as saying, like, leaving it very open to interpretation. Like, can we say either you are expected to, I mean, knowing that? Right, the enforcement of that might not be successful. But like, what is the expectation, not just from the city, but like, from one neighbor to another?
So I think I would go back to the first, the first agenda item that I touched, number seven, where we weren't trying to do anything with any of our policies. We're inconsistent with one another. And so if you look at our snow and ice guidelines excerpt from the prior number eight, what we did is residents are encouraged to do so if necessary along the front edge. So we wanted to keep that general, you're comparing the old versus new. We wanted to keep, make sure we weren't changing the level of service. Like, we're trying to do better, but we're not forcing you to do this, et cetera. I can tell you that I think we, from the experience of getting probably most of the calls and certainly myself dealing with those that get escalated, there's like a definite, like, well, then what should I do? Or what do I need to have somebody that I hire to do snow removal on my property do? And for some of us, it's intuitive. I don't think that it is, generally for the residents that I deal with. So I want to make sure that we just are clear, that we're not changing anything in terms of the requirements. We're trying to enhance the level of service. And here, we're just trying to, again, note that if they have, if a resident has a particular level of service that's beyond what we can provide, we're just affording them what they should do.
Commissioner, if I may, Mr. Lefave, can you discuss maybe how this also relates to our underlying city ordinance?
Right, the city ordinance does not require residents to shovel, remove snow on other sidewalks. It only compels them if there's an emergency. The city manager can compel them to do that.
Correct.
So again, that's already using the term "should" because we can't say you have to because it's not required by the law.
I guess the word "should" implies, I mean, to me, just in common vernacular, it implies that's something that you are supposed to, there's an expectation.
We're open to any suggestions.
So, right. And I'm wondering what others think. Like I said, I'm sure we've all heard feedback to this point, and that it may be fair to just say, there is no codified and that it may be fair to just say, there is no codified expectation that residents do additional clearing, but it would be a really nice thing to do for your neighbor. You know, I mean, if we're not going to take that step, which I'm not saying one way or the other that we should or shouldn't. I'm just saying we should be clear about the expectations that we are setting and what's required and what is not required.
Were there any other comments or?
I would think that you could probably rearrange the sentence just a tad and get to a better structure here. I don't disagree at all with what Commissioner Gruff Blazek is saying about the, just being a little unclear. So maybe if you started with, "To maintain sidewalks to desired level of service, comma, residents should clear," and go from there.
Is that good?
Your workshop language.
The shindale.
I mean, I think that's closer. I think it may be something more along the lines of just being very clear that there is no codified requirement that residents do additional snow clearing. Period. It's like adding in a sentence, like, "City ordinance does not require residents clear the sidewalks unless it's a stated emergency." Correct. And I think that
However.
Then that's
If residents desire the
Yeah. Which I think doesn't necessarily like, it doesn't solve the larger issue of how do we maintain sidewalks that are safe and great for everyone in the winter. But I think it moves the conversation then to like, what is our obligation to our neighbor rather than what does the statute or policy require?
Yep.
You want to say something?
Given this feedback, I would ask that the commission now give us a chance to go back and tweak this. And so what would, as we have a motion and a second on the floor at the moment, a motion then to postpone to a future meeting and give staff a chance to revise this language and bring it back.
Okay. So do we have the motion? Because someone need to make that motion then?
Yep, so we need to have that motion made.
Yep.
I will motion to postpone until staff has had an opportunity. How would you like me to say it? I will say it however you want me to.
To provide staff an opportunity to revise the language for future consideration.
Motion to postpone to provide staff the opportunity to revise language.
Perfect. Wonderful. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Next, we have to consider proposed revisions to winter maintenance and sidewalk priority routes. That introduction again is by Mr. Lefave.
As I noted, we have just one deletion recommended based on some changes in the community around St. Stephen's campus and then adding the additional routes up to and around the north shore and the trail around the lake and as well as Argentina from Breton to Plymouth.
Any questions for Mr. Lefave?
I do have a question. And I did, I'll acknowledge, I saw this in infrastructure and just second look, something else occurred to me. So glad to see Argentina is covered in here. I think that that'll be great for a lot of families and a lot of the traffic that goes up and down there to school. I am curious about the, when we say that we're aligning this to routes to school, that we've got part of it on the east side of the lake that goes through a separate school district. And I understand, is that, is that an effort to clear the path that goes through that, like the D's path?
So what we try to do for outside of the boundary there, we don't, for our plow routes that we have, when we show our maps to, you know, the official maps of the community, we show where the boundaries start and stop. What we're trying to show is that we're not going to pick up blades and just drive by or turn around and not do that area because our experience is that the community members do not have a sense generally of what the political boundaries are. And so even for plowing snow, our East Grand Rapids trucks will plow that section Reed Lake Boulevard out there by, and vice versa with Grand Rapids, we have some areas where they'll loop in to some of the borders we have, et cetera. So really, it's just about showing, showing, not cutting off the pedestrian piece there where like we're packing up and leaving or turning around, that we're going to continue that loop because we know the pedestrians aren't. And that's just something that we've learned repeatedly is that people have their routes and that seems to be a very popular route. We know that it's got the most volume in the city and certainly probably in the area from what we've seen. And we just wanted to incorporate that into what we're doing.
That, that makes, that makes sense to me. I wonder, like, if we are not, if the route is not going around the lake and we could eliminate that effort, let's say it stops at Manhattan. One other route on here that although this map, this heat map here does not show a lot of students living there, with the addition of the sidewalks on Robinson Road and the students that we have that live on the north side of Fisk and then down Lakeside, I wonder about adding that section on Robinson between Plymouth and Lakeside and then down Lakeside.
I think, I think that's something we, I think we would consider. I think we want to, we want to live it a little bit with those sidewalks being new there. And I think the other thing is having discussions with our equipment operators, they feel like what we've added already is something they can commit to to make sure we get, we have them done before 7:00 AM. And I wouldn't really want to go back to them to add in a couple more miles of sidewalk if it's not something that we feel is doable. So I'm really sensitive to making sure that people that do the work can commit to it. And I feel like we've stretched, stretched ourselves to where we can be by enhancing that service. But also would like to kind of see what the, I've seen, just being out in the project quite a bit, I've seen a lot more pedestrians out there. I'm not sure with the winter maintenance where that road's touching Kent County Road Commission and East Grand Rapids and some of it, the proximity of it to the road, I think we kind of want to, I don't want to make a commitment to something we can't do, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Whether it's a timing or just the level of service, we will plow it, but I want to make sure that it's something that we can do and we just haven't lived it yet. So that would be my ask.
I do fully understand workload and that's why I prefaced my question or my statement with that. I am just a little concerned then about the optics about this being like a priority routes to school. And it, again, favoring a section that doesn't have any students in our school district versus a section that does. So I don't design the routes. I understand the workload. But this might be something that we need to keep an eye on then. I don't know what others might think.
Yeah, I mean, currently, we're not doing it, we're not doing that as a priority. What I'll tell you is that that, because of what we see, and not just, not just for schools, but we do see a lot of pedestrian activity on the trail around the lake. And so our operations staff, that's where they go first after the priorities is generally there anyway because that's where they see people and that's generally where we get complaints, too. So I think their comfort level is, we think we can do it and we feel like it serves the greater community and schools better. And I think we want to, certainly with the improvements that we're looking at, that'll be coming up for 2026. We've had lots of time to talk to residents for that project, too, for Safe Routes to School. There would be an extension of that. So to that extent, what we're trying to do is align those improvements in the future with the reality that we do see, maybe not as many school children now, but maybe it's be, part of it is because we're not serving the area very well.
Any other questions for Mr. Lefave? Okay, could I get a motion and a second for this agenda item?
So moved. That's the trend now.
Second.
Any other conversations? Okay, then we can go to a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items. May I please have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for joining us and this meeting is adjourned.